John Merrick, location N20 acres of the east half of the northeast quarter section 34 and the southeast quarter of section 27 T6N R19, town of Waukesha. Tax key WAKT 1404996 and WAKT 1429999. Specifically to rezone the property from A1 and C1 to R2 and C1. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to hear, to be heard, excuse me. Leonard Malarkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't go into details of the proposal again, I'll just give you my comments on the potential of the proposed rezoning. So we're talking about the same property as before. The property is currently zoned A1 and C1, which is basically wetland. They're proposing a rezone to R2 and C1 as well to protect the wetland, obviously contingent on the comprehensive plan amendment passing. The zoning directly across 164 from the property is zone R1, as you can see on the map on the overhead, directly north, there's some commercial zoning, and the surrounding property to the northwest and east is zoned agriculture as well. R2 zoning is used in various locations within the town of Waukesha. These are primarily along arterial and collector roads, and similar to the petitioner's property, which is also located on an arterial road. They're also used adjacent to cities. These include Roanoke's, east of County Trunk Highway U, Oak Park Estates, northeast of County Trunk Highway Y, Morangestars Heights, south of County Trunk Highway D, west of 164 Chestnut Hill, west of Center Road, Morance Estates, east of County H and Davies subdivision, south of D, west of County Trunk Highway H. They're fairly scattered across the town in terms of where R2 zoning is applied. In terms of the actual R2 zoning requirements, the proposed development would be in compliance with all the dimensional zoning requirements, so even without a conditional use PUD, which is being requested and addressed under a different item, it's in compliance with the offsets and setbacks, et cetera. So again, in addition to the R2 zoning, the PUD would allow for the development of two family units on the same lot, based on the underlying zoning district. So with a base, R2 doesn't allow that, the PUD would allow that, in exchange for a certain amount of open space to achieve residential density. So the PUD conditional use that's being asked for under another item in a different public hearing is a conditional use within the R2 zoning district that the petitioner can request for review. We've addressed this in the previous public hearing, and my comments had to do with the navigable stream, the potentially navigable stream that's on the property. If that stream that's on the property is determined navigable, there would be a 300-foot buffer that would be considered county shoreline zoning, so there would be potentially some county zoning on this property. However, as I mentioned before, county staff may have known that if it doesn't impact building footprints, it would be a factor in this process itself. So we are still waiting for that determination from the petitioner. So that's all I have in terms of the rezoning, so.
Very good. Petitioner, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'd like to consider among the board to enter previous testimony from hearing number one, which was to address the same subject property or a change in the comprehensive land use plan, that we enter all testimony given at that public hearing into the record for this public hearing. People could feel confident if they've left that their comments would be entered into the record. If people choose not to speak again, their comments would be part of the record, and certainly if people would want to continue to speak or add something more, they certainly have that right, and we would be happy to entertain that. So I will ask, is there any objection to that, or would somebody like to make that motion on the floor?
Also move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would anybody like to discuss further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, thank you. And with that, the public hearing is open, so if anybody would like to speak, please do. Say general ground rules. Everybody speak once, please, before we get to seconds.
This thing's going to finish up real fast here, I think. Sandy Ham, west 230, south 3827, Milky Way Road. At the last meeting, I think it was, I spoke against having the three public hearings all back-to-back, and what's just occurred is exactly why I was against it. It really isn't three public hearings to me, because it gives the residents no time whatsoever to digest what took place and come back at a subsequent public hearing. It's really, de facto, one public hearing, and that's why I spoke against it, but you voted to do all three on the same night anyway, so I'm sure you'll be able to finish up much faster. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cal raid itself, 51 west 25151, Glendale Road. And I have to agree there a little bit with the last speaker. I'm a little confused now, exactly, we did that first hearing, and now we're talking about rezoning, but yet this rezoning can't even continue unless that first hearing gets passed and through, so what good is it discussing this right now when we don't have an answer of what's even going to happen? This second hearing and this third one might be a moot point, at least from what I'm understanding. Maybe I'm totally wrong, and I don't know what I'm talking about. And I realize progress is out there, it's going to continue, development's going to continue, and I'm not against that, I mean, I'm really not. However, turning what normally is single-family residence that we're all used to, you know, homeowners, things like that, that's what I'm against here, and it's simply that. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question, is if this development is turned...
Type your name, please.
Betty Padgett, south 57 west 22641, Woodside Court.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If this, the public hearing number one does not pass, what would his options be for building single-family homes on this land?
Thank you. Okay, so I heard, I think, two questions to explain the process. So we have three separate public hearings this evening to address three separate issues. The first one was to modify the land use plan. The second one is for the petitioner's request to rezone it from the current zoning of A1 and C1 to R2 and C1. So from agriculture and conservancy to residential to and conservancy. And then the final public hearing, to be held immediately following this one, is to address the petitioner's request for a conditional use on that land. The petitioner made the request and he's entitled to a public hearing. I don't disagree that if the, if the planning commissions does not recommend to the town board to make the changes in the land use plan, that these two public hearings would likely be a moot point. So I think that explains that. Anything to add, attorney? Options for single-family, as it stands now, this property is zoned A1, so if this does not pass, at this point in time, I don't believe that there would be a path to single-family residence. That's all that I picked up. Very well, yeah, start over is the best answer. Any questions, comments from the board?
This is joint also, but we can just make one motion though, because it's a joint meeting and a joint hearing.
All right. So I have a motion to close the public hearing. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I won't be able to support the motion. I think this public hearing should be left open until the issue is resolved. Leonard Malarkey has opened comments that this is contingent on passage of the comprehensive plan, so I think the zoning hearing should be left open until that issue is resolved.
Any other discussion?
I'm confused, what?
This is the public hearing for the petitioner's...
I understand, I understand, is that, why are we keeping it open? What am I...
Well, the bottom line is, the bottom line is that Supervisor Fisher doesn't feel that he has enough information at this point to close the public hearing and make a decision.
No, I misrepresented what I said. I said that I think this should be left open until the issue of the land use amendment request is resolved.
But...
I think that's another way, I don't think we should be dealing with both of these at the same time this evening. That's another way to say it. I think the land issue amendment should be resolved first. If that passes, then we could move ahead with this. I think I heard Mr. Macy say the town board cannot vote to approve the land use amendment request tonight. Did I hear that correctly?
The town board cannot act on the comp plan amendment tonight.
So we're going nowhere with that tonight, so my belief is that the zoning hearing should be left open. That's my reason.
I think I understand all of why you're doing that.
Okay.
And I would rescind my second.
All right, very good.
What are the...
Well, now there's a motion on the table. Is there somebody else that wants to second, closing the public hearing?
I believe the, I was the second, I rescind my second.
Okay, so there's still a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Does anybody want a second?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Well, I need a second before we can have a discussion. Otherwise, the motion will just fail for lack of a second. I'll second the motion. So, thank you, whatever you'd like to contribute.
Attorney Macy, what's the ramifications of leaving it open again? I think you set up a hearing again, please.
Yeah, you have to, if you don't close the public hearing, we recommend you set it over to a time and date certain, and then you would take additional testimony, but you won't even, if the comp plan doesn't pass by the plan commission, then it will be moot. We convene the public hearing on the conditional use, but we would just close it then, you know, because there would be nothing, you can't get a conditional use if you doesn't have the comp plan, that's what we've stated. So same answer as I gave before, the public hearing is adjourned and more information and testimony can be taken on the specific issue of whether or not to rezon the property.
Question. So can that information be given out after 30-day notice for the town board?
If I'm understanding your question, can you adjourn this public hearing to after the town board acts?
No, can we leave this public meeting and the next one open till we act in 30 days on the first one?
Yes.
You could just pick a date certain.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, would you like to...
Yes.
Why are we leaving the first, I guess I don't understand, so we're going to wait 30 days to make a vote on the first?
No, the first, the first public hearing has been closed.
And we're going to get to that on the agenda after these two public hearings, and when you act on it, or not, is up to you.
On the agenda for the planning commission is to act on it.
And to answer the supervisors, I mean, if this plan commission says tonight, we want to know what the town board's going to do on the comp plan before we act on the conditional use, you would set this public hearing over till April, man or clerk? 12, at 7:30.
But they still wouldn't know what the town board does, because the town board is after that, so...
No, no, I just said 7:30.
The town board would be at 6:30.
If the plan commission passes the resolution, Kathy has to send out notice pursuant to the state statute to a number of governmental entities and publish it in the paper, and that hearing would be tentatively, depending on what the plan commission does, at 7 o'clock on April 12. If you want to know what the town board's going to do on that, this plan commission would set this over to, let's say, you're making 7:05, you'd just say immediately following, but we give a set time, 7:30 on that day. By then, the public hearing would have been held, it wouldn't be over necessarily, because we'll probably have people here that night also, if we get that far, and then the plan commission would just hold their meeting, or a portion of their meeting, after that action. Does that make sense? We could handle the other plan commission matters if we have some that night before, but you'd have to wait then to hear the comp. Plan commission would wait, if you're mind to do this, you're just asking me what your options are, I believe, Supervisor. So yes, you'd just say, we're going to adjourn this to a time and date certain after the April 12. And I'm just recommending 7:30 that night, but it could be a month later, it could be whatever you want, you get to pick a time and date that you want to adjourn it to if this motion fails.
So the public hearing would only be for the second two items and not the first one?
Well...
Because we would have voted on the first one.
Right, this would only be on the rezoning, we're going to take up the CU in a minute.
Right.
Yes, I think I know what you mean, and the answer would be yes.
Okay.
Question. So we're looking for a motion...
Well, there is a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
No, I know that, but now we're calling a question on the first vote.
No.
The planning commission.
No. We're calling a motion, I'm going to call the question on the motion and the second to close public hearing number two. There's a motion and a second on the table that we're discussing to close the public hearing for hearing number two. Based on the results of that vote, we'll move forward one way or the other. Then we'll either, it'll either be closed, or somebody will have to make a motion to adjourn to a date certain, or we could sit here for a couple of days. But I have a commitment at 8 o'clock tomorrow night.
Mr. Chairman, you're losing me. If number one does not pass, all of this is...
That's true.
Then why are we not calling a question on number one?
Because we already called the question and closed number one.
We closed, well, we didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on...
I'll answer that question from a staff perspective. Believe it or not, the three hearings were lined up, because we received the applications, and we thought it as a courtesy to people that they could talk once, or, you know, and then stay and talk, and we'd get through the three public hearings. We didn't envision, I guess, all of the potential, no, Kathy and I, we definitely envisioned that you might be adjourned on this one. That's just a policy decision. We said they may want to wait to see what the town board does, they may want to wait to see what they do, so they may want to adjourn it, right Kathy?
Mr. Chairman, I think what Attorney Macy has suggested to me makes an awful lot of sense. If the public participation meeting is going to be set for April 12, at whatever time it is, scheduled resumption of the zoning hearing...
I'm working towards that avenue, but I have a motion and a second on the table to close the public hearing, and I'm trying to get a vote on it.
I understand, but we're having discussion, I'm just telling you, I think his suggestion makes imminent sense, and that's why I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion?
You're going to be a Chinese fire.
Motion and a second to close public hearing number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
The motion fails.
Now we need a motion to adjourn.
One moment, please, did you want to record the names? Do you have the names?
You can do it back, please.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so, now, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing number two to a date certain?
Yes, also move it, also move to adjourn it to April 12, 2018, predicated on the assumption that prior to the resumption of it, we're going to have the public participation meeting, and I suppose...
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, that's not going to solve my problem, you have to have a date and time. So you could say 7:05, so that we know the other hearing's at 7, right Kathy? The other hearing is scheduled for 7. And I'm being anal about it, because if you don't have a date and time, Kathy has to send out all the notices.
That's fair enough, so I will amend it to be 7:30, but I'm being a little bit anal about it too, because if we don't have the meeting before that for the public participation thing, then I'm going to vote to adjourn it further at that point in time.
Very good.
So 7:30 it is.
And the second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? So the motion and the second to adjourn the public hearing number two to April 12 at 7:30. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Public hearing number three, notices given of a joint public hearing involving the town of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Waukesha Town Board to be held on Thursday, March 8, 2018, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Waukesha Town Hall, located at W250 S3567, Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, to hear proposed conditional use plan, use developer, to hear proposed conditional use, developer for petitioner, John Merrick. Location N20 acres of the east half of the northeast quarter of section 34 and the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section 27 T6N R19, town of Waukesha, tax key WAKT 1404996 and WAKT 1429999, specifically to develop a 22-family townhomes on 34.29 acres. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. Leonard Malarkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned previously, along with the R2 zoning requesting, the petitioners also asking for a conditional use planning and development, which is a conditional use within R2 zoning. I just wanted to spend a moment talking about recent legislation in regard to conditional use authority of towns. 2017 Wisconsin Act 67, legislation passed late last year that specifically outlines conditional use authority for municipalities. Attorney Macy did a nice job outlining this for you in detail, but I just want to provide a brief summary in terms of how these are handled now by municipalities in Wisconsin. So conditional use authority is now specifically addressed within the statutes. In summary, conditional use decisions must be made based on substantial evidence, facts and information other than merely personal preferences or speculation, directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit, and that reasonable persons would accept in supportive conclusion. The applicant must present substantial evidence demonstrating that the application and all requirements and conditions established by the town relating to the condition of use are or shall be satisfied. Any condition imposed by the town through ordinance or by the town board must be reasonable and to the extent practicable, measurable, and may include conditions such as the permit's duration, transfer, or renewal. The town's decision to approve or deny the application must be supported by substantial evidence. So if the petitioner can meet all substantial evidence as outlined in the town's ordinances or imposed by the town board, the conditional use must be granted. So I have a few comments about the actual conditional use petition. In the town's ordinance, under the general conditional use section, which is section 13-2-9D, there are general requirements for review, basically how you have to review conditional uses, so we'd be looking for evidence based on the following. Will the, will the proposed development violate the spirit or intent of the ordinance? Will it be contrary to the public health, safety, or general welfare? Would it be hazardous, harmful, noxious, offensive, or nuisance by reason of noise, dust, smoke, odor, or other similar factor, or for any other reason cause a substantial adverse effect on the property values and general desirability of the neighborhood? Except as may be specifically otherwise provided, any such use shall conform to the building location, height, and area regulations of the district in which it's located, and the approving body may require compliance with other such conditions as may be deemed necessary in a specific situation. As I mentioned before, the proposed development meets all requirements of the R2 zoning district, which is being proposed with respect to setbacks, offsets to property lines, and minimum lot size. The variations that are being requested through the PUD conditional use are allowing multiple two-family buildings on one lot, the addition of a clubhouse, and an intensity bonus that's possible through the preserved open space. That's the variation from the interline zoning district. So the plan commission should determine if, by the substantial evidence presented, whether the proposed conditional use satisfies or will satisfy the above considerations. Also, with respect to the actual PUD conditional use, our ordinance outlines a number of factors that also must be met. Review and approval is subject to the following, being supported by substantial evidence. So block areas shall be determined and may be modified according to the following conditions: that all sanitary provisions are approved by the county health department, that the proposed development's not contrary to the general welfare or economic balance of the community, and that benefits and amenities of the result of development justify the variation from the normal requirements of a district in which it's located, that all other requirements of the PUD are met, and that the PUD requirements are as follows: maximum density is computed based on the interline zoning district and aim out to the preserved open space. The common open space shall be clearly delineated within development as an alot or easement, and shall not include open space within a developable lot. Up to 20% of the land in the proposed development currently zoned C1 may be used in the calculation. Adequate guarantee shall be provided for permanent retention of common open space by private reservation or public dedication. Perpetual care and maintenance of open space areas shall be provided for, and an operational plan shall be submitted for approval with the town Plan Commission Board. And finally, ownership and tax liability of the open space area shall be established in a manner acceptable to the town and made a part of the conditions of approval. So the plan commission should determine if there's substantial evidence showing that the proposed conditional use satisfies or will satisfy those above considerations. In terms of the actual development, and what was presented in terms of the proposal, the proposal meets what's identified in the PUD requirements in terms of densities being requested, open space being set aside, et cetera. So it meets the technical requirements of the PUD. The plan commission's task would be viewing the other more general conditions on this one. As mentioned previously, the market, the wetland and 25-foot buffer would be delineated, and that would be set aside for county parks and land use. The remainder of the open space on the site that's used toward the 50% calculation, because that's what they're going for here, they're basically preserving at least 50% of the site, and they can only include up to 20% of the wetlands, has open space to get the density bonus, okay? That needs to be preserved and described in the easement or in an alot, and I think what they're proposing to do is do a new easement, and that would be a condition of approval, that that would need to happen along with a maintenance and management plan and some guarantees in terms of perpetuity. In terms of calculations and the density, under the R2 zoning with the PUD and preserving 50% open space, they'd be allowed to request up to 43 units, what they're asking for is 42 units, so it's less than what would be, what they could potentially ask for. As I mentioned previously, in addition to the... As I mentioned previously, in addition to the requirements listed under the general conditional uses in the PUD itself, the Plan Commission and Town Board could impose other conditions on the property as well. We, we obviously have a list of standard conditions that we include as part of our staff review, but other conditions could be imposed as well, which is allowed by statute. Sanitary water, we were over that multiple times. We talked about that during the comprehensive plan public hearing. We talked about stormwater. I have no concerns there. We talked about architecture. We touched on that a little bit. I think that, here's the distinction, is that per the Site Plan Review Ordinance in the Town of Waukesha, Section 13-2-4, the town requires multifamily and commercial building facades to be at least 50% of the building faces as brick, decorative masonry, et cetera, unless authorized by the town. So, that, that kind of goes to the layoffs that have been submitted by the applicant. I think what was mentioned previously is some, maybe some alternate materials should be looked at. The Town Plan Commission needs to make a determination as to the, if the materials that are being proposed are adequate as finished materials for multifamily residences. It's been done in the past based on the quality of materials and the compatibility with surroundings. So that provision is in there. It just needs to be formally acted upon. In terms of landscaping, they have provided all landscaping as required for street frontage and building foundations per the code, so they do meet that. They're not proposing any lighting beyond what's typical, typical residential lighting attached to the buildings, so there wouldn't be any standalone light poles or spillover on the neighborhood properties. They're not proposing any signage at this time, but they, they would. They need to come back for a signage application. Plan of operation, we don't have a plan of operation for the proposed clubhouse and the garage and the maintenance and hours of operation. We'd ask, as a condition of approval, that there would be some kind of a plan of operation implemented for how that would be managed and how the garage would be used and the clubhouse would be used. The drive layout meets the cul-de-sac lengths in the town ordinance. The wetland setbacks need to be at least 75 feet. And then, as mentioned before, the cut field balance, that was a question before, has, has been addressed. And for the petitioner, it's a, it's a balanced site, and all, all field will come from the site itself. So those are my comments in terms of the, see you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the petitioner? Okay, thank you. Then the public hearing is open. Again, I would ask that there's a motion to consider, to consider entering all the testimony from public hearing number one to the record for this public hearing. I have a motion in a second on that. Everybody is certainly free to add additional comment should they so choose. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And the motion passes. The public hearing is open. For anyone who would like to comment, please. Please. I don't know if you were here earlier, but your name and address for that.
I was not here earlier. My name is Elizabeth Zohar, and I live at W-251 South 5048 Cartwright Circle. In meeting number one, I was at home listening and heard the comment made by somebody, I'm not sure who, that if we weren't here, we didn't care. I just wanted to let you know I had a conflict, could not be here at 6 o'clock. When I arrived, the parking lot was full, so I opted to go home and see her. My husband and I are not in favor of this development change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Anything from the board? Sir?
Thank you. Real quickly, Sandy Hall, West 230, South 38, 27 Oakway Road. I suspect that technically everything is correct. I have no reason to think otherwise, everything that you've presented. The one thing that you mentioned as you read through it was this section about, I don't know, the only word that stuck out was smoke, but I'm sure there isn't going to be smoke coming from this place. But it had other general considerations, and, you know, like, does it affect the lifestyle or whatever of, of the area? And I just think that a lot of people went home and think a lot of what their comments were, were non-technical and were just general, that they didn't think that this fit into the community. And I think that addresses that section of the PUD that you were talking about. So I just wanted to just bring that up and say that, you know, I assume everything is, all the setbacks and all the, everything is just fine. It's just a question of whether it fits in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments or questions from the board? All right, very good. Is there a motion to dispense with the public hearing in some fashion or another? No, it's not that easy. What would you like, what? What would you like to do with it? Close it? All right, I have a motion on the table to close public hearing number three. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, I have a second. I understand that. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I guess my comment, I won't be able to support this motion. It only makes common sense to me that we should adjourn this public hearing and continue it after the continuation of public hearing for the rezoning, which is scheduled to commence at 7:30 on April 12th, I believe it is, 2018. That only makes common sense to me.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, there's a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
No.
Motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to resume the public hearing for the conditional use permit on April 12th, 2018, following the continuation of the public hearing on the rezoning request, which is scheduled to commence at 7:30. I so move.
And a second, is there any discussion? There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. With that, that is the end of the public hearings for the evening. The Planning Commission will start their meeting, of which I am not a member, so I will leave it to the able-bodied remaining commissioners to elect an only chairman.
Are you all ready to proceed? Then we need to elect a temporary chairman to proceed with the rest of the Planning Commission. Do we have a volunteer amongst the, any able and capable bodies? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, I will abstain. Okay, then we will proceed with, Item 7, Discussion and Possible Action on the Comprehensive Smart Growth Plan Amendment, petitioner John Merrick. Location, the north 20 acres of the east, one half of the northeast, one quarter of Section 34, and the southeast, one quarter of the southeast, one quarter of Section 27, Township 6 North, and Range 19, Town of Waukesha Tax Key Number, This is a recommendation to the Town Board. This is, of course, a follow-on to the very lengthy first public hearing we had this evening. Wonder if we might even just ask a little bit further technical detail to provide, but whether we could perhaps ask Attorney Macy to simply outline what courses of action we might take this evening, please?
Certainly, you can table the matter, or you can address the matter. To address the matter, the general practice would be a motion to adopt the resolution, and if that's, motion is made in the seconded, then you vote on it. If it fails, the matter dies. If it passes, then we proceed on.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. Does everybody understand that? Okay, then additional discussion. I mean, Plenary Board, do you have anything further to add? Or have we exhausted this sufficiently? Do you have some, you have some recommendations if we're inclined to act affirmatively, do you?
Correct. There's a, there's a few conditions if you're inclined to act affirmatively in terms, in terms of approval. Those would be, in a general sense, that if you would choose to recommend approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that the Smart Growth Plan Act would be amended from commercial office to a little density residential, environment corridor designated as such. The two parcels, that the petitioner would obtain approval of the Waukesha Common Confidence Development Plan Amendment as well, petitioner would obtain approval of the rezoning of the property from A1A to R-2 single-family, and that the petitioner would obtain approval of conditional use for the residential PUD as well. So it'd be contingent upon all those happening after that.
Okay, thank you very much. Discussion, or by all means, if anybody has any questions about where we're at, now's the time to ask those. Go ahead.
We need a motion. As I said, most communities don't like negative motions, to be honest.
Understood.
We generally, no, I don't mean it for that. I mean, I mean,
No.
you know, it's generally, but technically, you're supposed to make a motion to adopt the resolution, subject to the conditions, and a second, and you discuss it, and if it fails, then the resolution isn't adopted, and the procedure, and we don't go forward.
Chairman, can I?
I'm sorry?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
In our public participation, the Plan Commission has to put together a recommendation using a resolution. That resolution is to approve, deny, or modify the opposed amendment. So you still have to do a resolution and pass a resolution. That resolution may be to approve, deny, or modify the amendment.
And thank you. And did you, do we have a document with that suggested language, or you're just verbalizing that for us?
I was just reading from our public participation.
Okay, all right. So she clarified that. We have to act in some capacity tonight. Again, Attorney Macy suggested that it would be best to,
Well, you could, as she's indicated, you could make up the resolution to.
Or deny.
Okay.
It's a resolution to deny the resolution, to be honest with you, or a motion to deny the resolution, but.
All right. So we're at the point where someone like to make a motion to adopt one of those resolutions?
Make a motion, we adopt.
Okay. Affirmative, and that would be to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment with the conditions as presented. Is that correctly said? Okay. So everybody understands the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Ask one more time, is there a second? All right, the motion then dies for lack of a second. We will continue on to the next item, and again, Attorney Macy.
We need an action. Just because that one failed for a lack of a second, you now have to ask if there's any other motion.
All right, is there, thank you for the prompting. Is there any other motion? Logically, that would be a motion to deny, correct?
I, I don't want to,
No, I understand.
I mean, you could change it, you could modify it, but,
Of course.
you know, whatever the body.
Tabling is an alternative, I believe, is it not? That would be another alternative. Of course.
You're, you're gonna, but if you come back, just so you know, you have to make it on what you heard. No one can talk to anybody, no one can get Newman letters. I don't want to go through the, a similar matter we had a couple months ago. You table it, you have the right to table it, but, that's just, if you table it, that's fine. I'm not going to tell you not to table it, but, then we're not going to hold a hearing at 7 o'clock on the 15th unless you table it before that. I can't even notice the hearing for the bill, the Town Board. Kathy can't even notice the hearing for the Town Board until you take action.
And yes, somebody desires to make the motion to table, then that would appropriately be until a date certain. Is that the way that motion should be framed?
I would recommend it.
Okay. All right, so we understand where we're at, or the options before us?
So what's appropriate, not make a motion to deny or table, correct?
Well, or to modify. I can't, I can't. It would seem to me if the motion to pass failed, why don't we try this? Why don't you go down the line and see where people are at on it? The only one where we know where we're at is one commissioner indicated use of a mind to adopt it as drafted. I don't know where everybody else is at, so it's hard to assist you with the motion.
Good suggestion. Commissioner White, your pleasure.
I guess I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion that we leave the Smart Growth Plan as is.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Mr. Macy, I sense you want to talk. No?
Well, only to clarify, that's really a motion to deny.
Okay, we've got a second. Would you, are you suggesting some other verbiage? Is the maker of the motion would be amenable to it?
Well, I think he has to add, I would recommend he add on that it's his motion to leave the Comprehensive Plan as stated and to deny the application.
Is that acceptable to you? And the second of the motion was Commissioner Stigler? Is that acceptable to you? Okay, then there's a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? Okay, then all who are in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that, I want to make sure we're clear on that. Was that four aye and two nay? Four aye and two nay?
I have four, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Now, procedurally, Mr. Fisher, you had suggested that possibly you would revisit the adjournment of the conditional use.
Correct.
And so it could be done, and we're going to drive the clerk crazy, I apologize to her upfront, that a motion to reconsider the adjournment of the public hearing for the rezoning.
And?
And let me explain where I'm going. If you reconsider that, we bring it back to the table. You can then, you can close the public hearing on the conditional use, deny the conditional use because the, the comp plan didn't match. Or we can leave it that date at 7:30. I, I don't care. But if you're trying to bring this to closure, you know, we could do the motion to reconsider. That's one motion, Kathy, and then there's the motion to, to close the public hearing, and then it would be a motion, then it's your next agenda item, which, because we can, you know.
Sure. I will, I understand. I will then move to reconsider the motion to extend the public hearing for the rezoning until April 12th, 2018 at 7:30. I will move to reconsider that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramirez to reconsider that motion. Everybody understand where we're at at this time? Okay, motion and second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's five to one. Okay. Then we can go on to Item 7C. I assume I need to read that correctly into the record that we are considering.
No, first we have to make a motion to close the public hearing. All you did was reconsider.
All right.
We brought it back to the table.
All right, so we need to do that affirmatively. Would someone like to make that motion? Understood. It's a two-step process.
So is the public hearing still open?
Yes.
Right now.
So Commissioner.
Sir, it's moved.
But sir, it's moot. It's moot. They denied the comp plan, so they can't give them the C.U. and they can't give their rezoning, because the conditions of the rezoning and the comp plan are, they have a conflict, so...
So, okay, if you would all, please, please, just give us a decent quiet place in the room. Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez, did you want to make a motion?
I would. Should we make a motion to close the public hearing?
That would be appropriate, if you're inclined to do that. Okay, so Commissioner has moved to close the public hearing number two on the rezoning. Is there a second to her? Seconded by Commissioner Stigler. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so that public hearing is closed, so then there's no point in proceeding with item seven C, is that correct? Do we need to deal with that?
No, the public hearing's closed, and so now you would either move to approve the rezoning, or recommended the Town Board to approve the rezoning, but that doesn't seem consistent with prior action.
All right.
So I think it's a recommendation to the Town Board to deny it.
All right, then we'll read it into the record. Item seven C, Petitioner John Merritt. Location, north 20 acres of the east, one half of the northeast, one quarter of section 34, and southeast, one quarter of section, of the southeast, one quarter of section 27, Township six north, range 19 east, Town of Waukesha, tax key WAKT 1404996 and WAKT 142999, recommendation to the Town Board, so the logical recommendation would be a motion to deny the rezoning request.
Recommendation to the Town Board to deny the rezoning.
Correct. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion?
I would like that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stigler, is there a second to the motion?
My second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All in favor of denying the rezoning request indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Well, it was five to one with Commissioner Flanagan opposed. Then, I'm assuming we need to do the same thing, the conditional use for the planned unit development, a motion to reconsider, I'm assuming would be in order to reconsider the resumption of that hearing on April 12th, 2018, following the previously scheduled resumption of the rezoning hearing at 7:30. I would move to reconsider that action, and look for a second. Okay, does everybody understand that motion, to reconsider? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. And then a motion would be in order by someone to... Close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Ramirez, seconded by Commissioner Flanagan to close the public hearing for the conditional use for the planned unit development, which was scheduled to resume on April 12th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, and then we need to have one further motion to deny the conditional use request for the planned unit development, and that would be the final motion.
Again, it's a recommendation to the Town Board to deny the conditional use permit for planned unit development.
Correct.
And the reason for the same, because technically it's a conditional use, is that it isn't in compliance with the comp plan.
All right, the motion has been made by Commissioner Stigler. A second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramirez, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Okay, that passed five to one. All right, then we'll move ahead. I think we'll just keep going. Don't know whether Chairman Merritt wants to resume. I presume we'll just, Clark Nicholas can check and see.